Good evening, everyone. I'll call the Brandon Select Board to order for the August 23 regular board meeting. Thank you all for being in attendance tonight. Ms. Giles, do you see anybody on the Zoom?
No, I don't see anybody. What's the element up here?
Are we on the correct Zoom?
I did check that, and this is the one that matches our meeting.
Meeting order. Okay, very good. First item is to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion relative to the agenda?
I like that motion.
Sorry. Motion for Mr. Coolidge and a second for Mr. Wyman to adopt the agenda. Any changes to be made? I have two to suggest. Could we add item 5A to hear an update from the Energy Committee? And add an item 7A to announce committee vacancies on the Energy Committee and the Planning Commission? Any other changes to be made, additions? If not, all in favor of the agenda as it was just amended, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item two, approval of the board minutes from the public hearing of August 9th and then the regular board meeting of August 9th. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to, uh, wait, should I, I want to hear it separately.
We can do it separately, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, A, the select board meeting, or B.
Mr. Wyman moves to approve the minutes of August 9th Select Board Meeting. Is there a second?
Sure.
Second for Mr. Coolidge. Any errors or omissions in the minutes submitted?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I do have.
Mr. Chair.
Um, on page four, the first paragraph, it starts with Mr. Archer's name.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven lines down. Um, it says that, um, and this is from Butch Shaw, because he was here. Um, it says, "Mr. Emerson, I've talked to Butch Shaw and was advised it is hard to get the state to sell land, but it would be easier to do a 99-year lease, and Mr. Shaw suggested the possibility of leasing land." That conversation did not happen prior to that meeting.
So, uh, you were suggesting we strike the sentence? Okay, is everybody clear? We would be, uh, striking the sentence that says, "Mr. Emerson has talked to Butch Shaw and was advised that it is hard to get the state to sell land, but it would be easier to do a 99-year lease, and Mr. Shaw suggested the possibility of leasing land." Okay. Any other errors or omissions in the minutes? If not, all in favor of adoption of the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You opposed, say no. You guys have it? To A, the public hearing minutes. Mr. Coolidge moves to approve. Ms. Giles, seconds. Any errors or omissions in the public hearing minutes? None heard? All in favor of adopting the minutes as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
I'm going to understand.
Mr. Wyman understands? Uh, but that's three and zero and one. Oh, we passed that. Very good. Item three, the town manager's report. Mr. Chair.
I was following the report, it's August 9th and August 16th. Uh, spoke with DuBois King about the USGS marker that was mentioned in the last meeting, um, that was removed during segment six. Per plans, it was listed as a remove-only item and not to be replaced, as it would have been replaced in the middle of the roadway. And apparently, this thing was sold, and it wasn't even considered a marker anymore. So, um, again, followed up with DuBois King and B-Trans about the zero-mile marker that was discussed at the last Select Board meeting, and nobody knows what it is and who installed it. So, B-Trans is trying to follow up with that one to see who is putting these zero-mile markers in. Another follow-up from the last meeting, discussed with Dave Monroe at Wilson O'Neill about the traffic light timing. I'm working on scheduling time for him to observe the intersection and see if timing changes are possible. He was on vacation last week, and I did get an email from him today that he's been wrangling their traffic light guy up to, um, to, uh, maybe do some adjustments, scope it out first. But, um, his thought was that back when the traffic was, plan was first designed, that traffic has increased since then, which obviously, we're all seeing. And that would definitely warrant a change for the northbound lane to be free more than it is. So, there's some possibilities there.
Southbound.
Or southbound lane, sorry. We'll see what possibilities are there for doing that. Spoke with Scott Robinson about the request for a four-way stop at the Park-Marble High Street intersection, as was discussed at the last meeting. He remembered too, that this had been discussed many times over the years. And the determination was that the traffic and accident studies did not warrant the need for a four-way stop. Um, we've received another local option tax payment in the amount of $62,645.45, which is significantly more than we had anticipated. So, this is working out well for us. Um, the construction of the four bioswales on Pearl Street has started and should be completed by the end of the week. Lowlandscaping is going at low speed for, that's through natural resources, from kind of natural resources. Um, we're preparing the parking area site behind the former mobile state station for construction, and DuBois King will be on site with a contractor as project inspector, and that's actually going to be started this week as well. Um, we have confirmed the governor's visit on August 25th for the 10th anniversary of Tropical Storm Hunter Ian. I'm going to also be visiting New Road to discuss the property buyouts and flood mitigation projects, and I did attach the, um, theater release, I think, for you guys. Other than that, I haven't used them. The US Forest Service has given us funding of $10,000 for gravel and road maintenance on Churchill Road. We've done quite well with the Forest Service, given us funds to rebuild that road, so that's pretty exciting. They're still doing that for us. Uh, REC News, Brandon RECK will be offering archery on Fridays at Estabrook, starting September 10th. On August 17th, the Brandon Dog Park Committee held a volunteer day to perform some punchless work. Uh, thank you to Cecil, Cecil Ringe, how am I going to say that name right, Smith? Karen Calatreia, Blake Contreras, and Brian Danforth, Nina Hansen, Dave Martin, Chris and Mark, and Ashley for their help. Work is not completely complete, as we'll be hosting a grant opening in early September. The park is usable now and needs only signage and some cosmetic final touches. Uh, Fall Cheerleading for grade sport of sixth registration is open, and our preseason soccer clinic with Opie Girls Varsity was a smashing success, with 50 kindergarten, six-grade kids kicking off their season with a destruction from Tammy, Elena, Ella, and Rick. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for the town manager from the board?
Yeah, or, on, when you were having to pin some stuff, I had a resident girl street ask, apparently, there were survey pins that haven't been replaced.
So, I, I'm pretty sure I know what this is, and they're, they were temporary survey pins. They were in the, the one was in the middle of the driveway.
Yeah.
The other one was on the corner. They were put there by DuBois and King when they were doing the right-of-way work. They're not permanent for survey pins.
Okay. So, there wasn't any permanent survey pin there?
No. And we look back, actually, because the gentleman approached us too about it, and we've looked back through all of our, the survey stuff, the deeds and everything, because it would be a remove-replace if we were to go back, as listed, and it's not. Those weren't, they were only there for right-of-way releases.
Okay. Thank you. Dave, can you talk about, um, the Pearl Street bioswales that just happened to drive, are they, they look to me different, uh, they're in a different spot than like the Park Street bioswales? Like, these are, can you talk about, like, the whys? And like, is there curving happening or does it not need to happen?
No.
Because it wasn't curving at Pearl.
No, I can tell, so, these are, these are very different. Obviously, two different approaches to kind of the same result. So, when we did that stormwater master plan back in, I think, 2016, through Watership Management, that, you know, listed all of our prone areas for, for, you know, where either has stormwater issues or standing water issues. Um, as you know, Park Street before, the way that the street was, that the water would sit between the curb and the travel lane, because it was, that was the low spot. So, the bioswales were installed on that to mitigate the water that comes down the street, um, and then now it goes into our storm system. The ones on Pearl Street, because there's really not much curb on that street, so the water actually sheds off the road, which we wanted to do, but then it sits in those green spaces. So, we did have, we did have some storm rain there before, and this is just more of a kind of a sediment filter type thing, so we're, you know, it's that whole TNDL thing, where we're not putting phosphorus and sediment or whatever into our gravestones, and it goes all the way to the pond. So, and those ones, again, that's through, I'm going to get the latter wrong. It's National, it's National, it's something, Natural Resources around the town. That was that 100% funded grant, which they're also going to do on the bottom of the park. They're not applying a corner square block to, so that's why they're different. Just a different, same, same end result, just a different way to water shut.
Great explanation. Thank you. And secondly, if you have any status about, it's great about the Forest Service partnering with us, um, for gravel and maintenance up there at Churchill Road. What's the status right now, or what's the status going to be of the trailhead parking at the end?
It's done. We did it.
Ready to be used?
Yeah, yeah, it is. I think if we're partnering now, we, we helped them out with that last, last call. So, it's been, it's been open since. The road's all done, and, you know, the culvert's gone, and the river's gone.
And are we, you know, when we talk about this partnership, like, are we taking on the road only, or are we also, like, kind of supposed to be monitoring the trailhead parking?
No, we're only doing our portion of the road, because it actually turns into a lesser road there, so it's not ours anyway, but, well, there's a gate, actually. If you're familiar with it, there's the gate where it starts the Forest Service area, but, um, and, you know, if they want to, if they want to continue to fund, you know, the work, we'll do it. But, the only reason we did the parking area then is because it was so overgrown from not being used for how many years, so they just wanted to kind of dig it out of it and rebase it.
So, that was like a one-shot kind of rehabilitation? And now, we're taking care of the maintenance within the town to the town line?
Not, well, I mean, it's a class four.
Okay.
So, they just wanted to do this so folks could, you know, if they're driving a little car, they can get down the road a little bit easier, so. But we still won't be plowing it down, you know, through their fare or anything, so.
Okay. Just to follow up on Cessna, um, is that, uh, going to be ongoing for the, just this end time?
We'll see. We'll see what happens. I don't know. Um, you know, they, they usually have some funding left over year-end, and it's worked out well for us up there. Um, I can't imagine that we're going to see a lot of road erosion and everything. It runs out of pretty well for the 20 years that, you know, has been maintained, so we should be okay.
Okay.
But with that, it's kind of a partnership, we're on that, so.
Questions from the public for the town manager.
Jack Schneider. Hannover's proposing to do some construction, including an addition on the back. Is there a drainage system back there, or where does that water go? I know there's drains in the parking lot.
That would be, that's on that level, where they would drain. So, back there, there's no town drain?
It's a pretty big parcel, right?
Yeah, well, it goes way down behind.
But, I mean, uh, the drainage structures in the parking lot belong to the property owner, right? And the parcel goes back beyond the supermarket building, and that's where they're talking about with the work.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't know where their stormwater drains do. Chad, I'm sure they'll have site plans, so it's all good.
Okay. Other questions for the town manager? Still nobody answered? Interesting. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. So, uh, number four is public comment participation. This is items not on the agenda elsewhere. There is also always public comment available on every agenda item, so do not be bashful. But, uh, this would be the time to raise a matter that you don't see elsewhere on the agenda tonight, anyone to bring to the board's attention or the community's attention. Anyone on the board? Nothing right now? Okay, well, we'll move along, and, uh, we can always come back to it. Item five, BLSG resolution discussion. Excellent. So, we've got, um, a resolution, and we've got the original organizing agreement. And the resolution makes reference to the organizing agreement, uh, and so forth, from 1978? So, um, it's mine, do you want to speak to this, Wayne, or do you want me to just?
No, I'm just hoping that you folks, uh, excuse me, I'm hoping that you've all had a chance to go over that, and see what the resolution is.
Yep.
And, uh, you know, if you have any questions, if I can answer them, I sure will. Uh, we're looking for suggestions, but, you know, just suggestions, like, we don't want you to say, "We want this in there." We'd like to see it in there, would be, would be better.
That is my question. So, when we met last time, you were, I think the BLSG was about to have a meeting. Did the meeting happen?
Yes.
Is this resolution still the, the one that's current?
Yes.
Like, did it get changed?
It's going to be changed, and the new one hasn't, the new one hasn't been signed.
The new?
The new agreement, you know?
Okay.
The changes haven't been signed.
Okay. So, the BLSG, because of the way the organizing agreement is written, they need an affirmative vote from the select boards of the towns to adopt the resolution?
No.
Change? No?
No. All we're looking for is suggestions.
Still in the suggestion.
If you looked at, if you looked at paperwork, and you say, "Jeez, I'd like to see this in there," we'll take the suggestion, but that doesn't necessarily.
Okay. I thought we were, I thought we were kind of like past that, because that was going to happen before the meeting, and I thought maybe the meeting was, the BLSG meeting was ready to roll with this. Okay. So, uh, BLSG is looking for comment and suggestion regarding the proposals in the resolution. And I have to say, um, you know, there's some that are just kind of wording changes to modernize things, which sound fun, and, uh, there's a couple of substantive changes, changing majority to two-thirds, changing the name of the district, and then changing the amendment period from six months to two months. I, I have no problem with any of them, and I had no further suggestions myself, personally. Others?
I don't have any suggestions.
You don't have any?
No. The town manager? No, not really.
Okay. So, I go back to my board and say, Brandon Select Board, okay with the way it's written?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that, I think it's well taken. You know, I think you're going to, um, have a sustainable agreement with the changes that you're making, and I would support it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Ann. Thanks for getting us the, uh, organizing agreement, which was very interesting to read. So, uh, no votes required, but, but at some point, the BLSG is going to ask us to sign off on?
No. Nope. Just, our board is going to sign off on it.
Your board's going to sign off?
Yes. We're just looking for, we want...
Well, what about this 7A thing?
The what?
It says, "For amendments, this agreement can be amended in whole or in part, including amendments for the purpose of adding other municipalities, blah, 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 in the following manner: Has to be adopted by two-thirds of the board present and voting in a meeting of the BLSG board."
Right.
"Any meeting for the consideration of amendment will be warned and so forth." And then B, "If it's adopted, it then will be submitted to the legislative bodies of all the member municipalities." So, that's us.
That's if another, if another town wants to join, you have to sign off on it.
I don't think so.
We didn't do that on this report.
I think the board, I think, I think the BLSG agreement says that any amendment to its organizing agreement needs to get signed off on by the select boards.
Didn't I just say that?
Like, regardless of whether it's a new town. No?
I think you lost me there.
So, the way I'm reading number seven, in the original agreement, it, it gives two steps. The BLSG board has a certain process to vote on an amendment to, to the organizing agreement.
All right.
And then the next step says, "If the proposed amendment is adopted by the BLSG board, it then shall be submitted to the legislative bodies of all the member municipalities. Such proposed amendments will become effective upon its adoption by the legislative bodies of two-thirds of the municipalities within six months."
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
So, you'll be bringing it back to us for us to vote on?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all I'm trying to find.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay. So, we'll, we'll see that sometime down the future. Nothing tonight. So, 5A, update from the Energy Committee. The Chair of the Energy Committee, Jim Emerson, is here.
Thank you. Um, so, there's two pieces. One is, I want to, um, I think you have an agenda item for the ARPA fund, and I'll talk about that separately. We, we've, uh, supported the idea of Solar Fest coming to Brandon, and there's some great headway with their interest. They find us the most welcoming, the most, having put the most thought into inviting them to come, and given them the most intriguing, um, opportunities. Then they're hoping to come back, I think, in October. We have basically, because the property of most interest happens to be the land, state land, uh, where the water tower is. That requires some negotiations with the state of Vermont. I poked a stick at what that process was, and with Butch's help, came to understand that, um, that requires either a, a, uh, sale or a long-term lease, if you wanted to have it more than a 10-year arrangement. 10-year arrangements can be approved by the, um, by the, the Buildings and General Services Commissioner himself. Otherwise, it goes to the state legislature, and then it also goes through a process where it has to go through an open bid, to ensure that the state taxpayer gets its fair shake. There's some possibility to understand, Butch. If you have a land swap, it can be less complicated.
Yeah, thank you. So, you've got it pretty close. It's a pretty arduous process. It involves two separate, uh, portions of law, and one in Title 10 and one in Title 29.
For the latter, please?
Okay. It's a pretty arduous process. It's, it's, it entitles, uh, it entitles two sections of Vermont law under, uh, Title 10 and Title 29. Uh, one is for lease, one is for sale. Uh, you're, you're, you're pretty correct on the 10-year lease. Uh, the Commissioner of Buildings and General Services may enter into a 10-year lease, and that's the extent of her authority. She cannot go beyond 10 years. And typically, uh, uh, I have, I was sat on the Committee of Jurisdiction for BGS for 11 years. Anytime that the Commissioner signs a lease, no matter with whom, outside of renting an office space, but typically for land or building, they will run that by, uh, the full legislature before they enter into a 10-year lease. If you wanted a longer lease, then you could, through the process, ask for a longer lease, uh, and that would have to go through the legislative process, because you have to withstand the law to, to be able to do that. Uh, I was, the longest lease while I was in that committee, we did for 35 years, and that was for Green Mountain Power to build a solar field at Windsor Prison. Uh, they, they leased 50 acres down there for a solar field at Windsor Prison, and that was 35 years. We scientifically came up with that particular timeline, because that was about the length of the, uh...
Useful life.
Useful life of, of the solar panels, so we agreed on that. Uh, and, and like Jim says, uh, it, there's, there's a process that's generally, should the legislative body decide that they want to, uh, move forward with, with investigating that, uh, it takes, uh, it'll take probably a minimum of 12 months to get to the, okay, we'll put it in the bill process, or expedited, if, if you had authority, uh, you know, you could probably try to get it into this year's Capitol Bill Adjustment Act, but you'd have to have that done by end of October. Uh, and all types, those profit searches and title searches and all the valuations and, and all that stuff would have to, uh, and that, then that just would give BGS the authority to sell the land. And then, like Jim said, then it goes, uh, to a bid process, and if the bids aren't, uh, we don't get, they don't get enough money, they're obligated to sell it at fair market value. The bids come in below fair market value, then they take it back, and the state takes the land back, puts it out for sale through a real estate agent at fair market value, and then it just opens up to everybody.
So, the reason this is a concern is that I, uh, well, first of all, I have, um, passed the ball on, uh, the negotiations or the, I've had the most direct contact with Solar Fest, but I've passed the ball to Bill Moore, which is fit, because he's, especially if it gets into dealing with, um, the state land in any fashion that's beyond my pay grade. So, the, uh, but the big deal is that, um, I think the town could have some longer-term interest in this land. For example, the state legislator's thinking of a program for, example, uh, for low-income housing community solar, which, in our town, as you know, there's many people who are not going to be able to afford $10,000, $15,000 for this solar installation at their house. There are many people who aren't going to be able, who don't have a suitable site for solar. So, this idea of a community solar that would, um, be set up in an arrangement, my understanding is that it's very preliminary, is that, uh, the, the participants would be able to pay from their energy savings. And so, which is, um, I think very desirable for trying to achieve these goals seriously. Where would you put a 30-acre site in town? Well, it happens to be that site had three phase. It may have, uh, enough, uh, substation capacity. Don't know right at the moment. Green Mountain Power knows it's going to have to confront extending its three-phase capacity for more of these kinds of projects. My concern is that the town, A, if you want to support Solar Fest becoming, take a step of sending a letter to the Department of Buildings and General Services, saying, "We are interested in this property. Can we work out an arrangement?" It takes maybe two months for them to come back and say, "Oh, yes, we realize we own this property." I can tell three weeks to figure that out. And then, and why do we have it? They don't know, but it's, it's something where there's a, you know, bureaucratic process to go through, and we invite you to initiate that letter, have, you know, Bill Moore, Dave talk to Butch, or the Commissioner, to get clear on all the mechanics of it, because I may have not spoken precisely enough. But I encourage you to take that step in the next, not necessarily this meeting, of course, but hopefully by next meeting. Because we want to bring Solar Fest in, and we see this property, uh, we can invite them to do that, let Solar Fest talk to the state, but I think there's some real good reasons to, um, have the town be the driver's seat on it.
Can you clarify, Willie, is the desired outcome for the town to lease the land from the state, or for Solar Fest to lease the land from the state?
My, my recommendation is that the town lease the land, and then it sublease the third, or 35 acres, or the, I think it's 30 acres or after, to Solar Fest. And then you have control over this land, and we may have other, um, goals to use it for.
And are they, if you're thinking about the, who's going to read this letter, um, at the state level, are they going to be wanting us to identify what are our goals for the other portion that's not Solar Fest?
They won't.
I would think.
Yes.
Do we have those goals?
I do. But I... My, my, again, it's this potential solar site for future expansion, whether it's municipal need, which is the first level of, you know, this round of ARPA that we've been talking about, like, where would we put more panels kind of thing? But the, it sounds like the second level of potential use of that land is for a community solar site that could be larger and more inclusive. Right now, the, just, and I'm sorry I take up more time than I expected, but right now, it's a town, the, the town, the municipality needs about a 500 kilowatt system. If the town was to be 90% solar right now, it would need a megawatt, would be 20 times that of capacity. Instead of a three-acre site, you're going to need a, you know, 30-acre site. If, so, I, I, my view is, we need to think about where we're going to be at 2050. In the year 2050, how are we going to meet those renewable energy needs? And we need to, you know, get our foot in the door on having capacity to meet those needs. The, um, uh, what the technol, right now, I think there's two big things that are coming, that solar's gotten cheaper and cheaper. They're saying it's, these large solar products are generating electricity, that they're selling to Green Mountain Power for less than nine cents a kilowatt. They have been driven down, where they're going to, prediction is, not so many years from now, it's going to cost the same to build a solar product, uh, to generate solar as it does get highly corroded for six, six and a half cents a kilowatt. And we're not far from that. I'm getting sidetracked. The point is, if we're going to meet these 2050 goals, we need capacity to do that. I think this land can be prominent, poses places south, it's remote, I never even knew the darn land existed. You don't notice it, it meets a lot of... the darn land existed, you don't notice it, it meets a lot of criteria. And I think it'd be good to get a foot in the door to say, hey, we're interested in that. Does that mean you have to do anything when you say, come back and say, yeah, we want to do something? No. It means you've got however many time, you know, somewhere between twelve months and twenty-eight months to sort out, hey, does this really make sense?
Is, is that water tower pressurizing the Joseph Park Village?
I have no idea.
I thought it was not used anymore.
Oh, it's still used.
Oh, it is?
It's still the water.
Oh, I had no idea.
So, a couple of things, and I've, I've been dealing with this, you know, with what's, I've been talking to Butch and I actually had sent an email, I'm looking at my phone because I forget people's names.
His name's Butch.
It's not really, it's me.
So, I'm going to keep on Butch in the loop with these emails, to Marco Grady, who's identity commissioner, and then he actually referred me to speak with Jennifer Fitch, who is the commissioner. So we're hoping to touch base here this week to see what the options are and how to move forward with this. A couple of things that I've just kind of taken notes on, like, we all know, if we enter into, if we want to buy properties, town, I haven't pulled it forward to do it. I'm wondering too, like, we need to look at this, do we need to do that if we enter into a long-term lease agreement as well? The other thing, I was just looking at, I was on like the ANR Alice last week, just kind of looking at this piece of property. There's a lot of information you can get from that, like lot size and everything. And it had an assessed value, who knows how acre it is, to one hundred and thirty-two acres, of one hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So that's a big, that's a big chunk of change for the town. Just saying, that's what it's out there now, is it wouldn't open up. One eighty-six. So, you know, an appraisal would need to be done at some point, but if the states, I'm sure the state's going to appraise it if they decide to sell it, if they want to know where it's worth. But those are just some things that I'm, you know, questions I think need to be asked too, on, you know, is this, is this feasible all around? And one thing I just wanted to add in, and I think I sent emails out to the three of you, maybe you would, I did speak with Casey Catherine, who was the head of the program for the closed landfills. They are now letting folks do solar panels on closed landfills. There's a different process for installing them because they don't actually work for the clay liner that covers everything. So she sent me a ton of information last week on this. I think that's something we should really look at, pursue one too, because we have that, you know, big pile there that costs us money every year because we have to get it monitored and tested. Might not be a bad idea to put some solar out there, so. And we already own it.
Just one final piece on the Energy Committee, we are spending the next two or three meetings to get clear, clear about our goals, both short-term and long-term. We really are, one of the priorities for me is to make sure we define where are we now and where do we want to go? We're at, if we want to go to ninety percent of goals, what does that mean? How many kilowatts does that mean we're going to generate twenty, twenty-fifty? Those kind of things. So we're trying to get, get our arms around the big picture, one of the pragmatic steps. See our mission as not trying to push you folks for those goals. Our mission is to make the opportunities and the possibilities clear so you feel pulled to accomplish them. So if I'm not on, and the other thing I tell you, please remind me.
Thank you, Jim.
Butch. So Seth, I spoke to Stephanie this morning and she is on board with me on this. So I think if you, the board wants to move forward with an inquiry to Buildings and General Services, proper thing to do would have manager write a letter to the Commissioner and ask, just put it, ask if it's available and have, and an acquirer, tell just a rough outline of what you're thinking. I hope you do because I want to know why you still have that land up there and it didn't get sold with training schools. So if, you know, that goes way back into the sixties, that, that the state has owned that land. I can guarantee you, if nobody, Buildings and General Services know that they own that for any intensive
Maybe we should just build there.
Who's maintaining the land?
Oh, it's not me.
It's not by the mowing.
There was a little bit of mowing on it.
It's, no, it's just overgrown. Just overgrown.
So we'd, we'd be happy to trade off.
It seems like it's a no-cost, just information gathering possibility.
Would you like to have a motion on this from the board?
We clearly need a motion at one stage or another. Like, as, as I see it, the, we could ask Dave to, you talked about discussing some more with the Commissioner and so forth, right? I don't know, like, that's kind of possible. So we could ask Dave to have those discussions and probably run past the town attorney. Do we have to have a town meeting vote to enter into a long-term lease, things of that nature? And then come back to the board and the board could decide to write a letter? Or we could just ask Dave to write a letter? And it's, there's pluses and minuses to both of those approaches.
Yeah, if you're looking for a motion, I think I would make the motion for the second. And it's a no-cost, no-commitment exploration for Dave to write the letter. And it will also allow us to proceed with a positive energy with Solar Fest, letting them know that we're moving forward to explore this idea for them. Because it's a linchpin, I think, for them to want to be involved with us, that this potential is fully explored.
So the motion for this to go is to ask the town manager to write a letter to the state because of Buildings and General Services Commissioner regarding the parcel that surrounds the water tank at Park Village.
You want to put in there a tool, have him check in county and?
Sure, if you'd like that to be explosive, sure. Is that a question? That makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So the second for Mr. Wyman with a friendly amendment, that Dave also be requested to check with the town attorney. Regarding
Regarding the issues.
Is there discussion? Public comment or discussion? Dave, any, any feelings? You fine with proceeding this way?
Yeah, it's fine. No, I mean, we've sort of been kicking this around anyway, so. It's kind of what I was going to plan on doing, was have a chat with, with Jennifer Fitch tomorrow, hopefully, and then go from there.
Okay. Yes, Neil.
I'm sorry. It seems that somebody brought up, Dave brought up the possibility of putting solar on landfill. And I know very little about that. How many acres is it if you're looking for thirty acres elsewhere? Does it come close?
No, it's not thirty.
The restriction on that site is that you need three-phase down there and there's only one-phase power, plus you, there's not enough capacity at the substation, so that would require an expensive upgrade at the substation that serves that area. So the limitation is not the size of the land, it's the fact that you can only probably put in a hundred fifty kilowatt system there. And so that's why our initial proposal was for a hundred fifty kilowatt system. And we'll talk about that at another segment of the
So regardless, I still think that is our demand that we own.
Yeah, well, it should
Then we have to pay an annual maintenance fee on. And, you know, we looked at doing this when we did our solar array up in, you know, in V I C lots first, and it wasn't ruled to them by the state, now it is. And I think if we, if we can gather it, you know, it might be worth seeing what it costs to run three phases down there, because it's really not that far away. And again, we already own the land and we might as well
Well, it's certainly worth that exploration.
Three-phase, the ages, wasn't it? Oh, it might, it might stop there, and we'll have to look.
That's kind of what I thought, because I think all their, their whole facility, I mean, I think it's all, there's no generator system. I don't think they'd have to be right here.
Well, maybe the substation issue is there.
Oh, yeah.
Like a three percent capacity left. So that, that's why they said the big hurdle was on the cost, but it's worth certainly exploring. And, yeah, I guess
So as, as the equipment stands now with Green Mountain Power and the access and so forth, is, is some amount of solar at the landfill site able to be accepted or not right now?
The
I think Green Mountain would need a request from us, an application for them to commit to allow us a power source.
Yeah, my, yeah, this is, I was going to bring this up later, but the, what I've been told is that the single-phase would support a hundred fifty kilowatt system. That from the, there's an expert in, in Montpelier who consults with municipalities and, and with businesses and all about installing larger projects. He said it's a two hundred, two dollars and twenty cent per kilowatt for a system of that size. If you step up to the five-hundred kilowatt system we talked about, and also, that's a dollar seventy per kilowatt. So unlike the million-dollar safe code I got from one, what's their name, Sun, not Suncom, but one of the, the contractor brought, same seller. He's suggesting, well, you do that larger project for eight hundred and fifty and eight hundred and fifty thousand. So there's, I don't know how much money is coming from our, but that's one piece to put out there.
I got another question about
But if I may finish, the, the, the one fifty project, what were we talking about? I just lost it.
Whether it could go into the, the system?
Well, this is the big deal. This is the biggest deal of it all, is that the Green Mountain Power has softened its commitment to these, these kind of systems. Because they've got these huge mega systems on tap and coming, that, not under nine cents, they're saying, well, I don't know why we should support the, even the household roofing thing, instead of being the twenty cent rate that they used to pay me, they're knocking it down to, they're going to pay fifteen cents instead of, for what I generate, even though I pay sixteen five to them for what I use beyond what I generate. So they're saying, hey, we, we're, and they also realize they don't want to commit to these bigger substation improvements, so they're shutting the door on projects. They're, the local manager of the installations, I don't even remember his name, but he told me, hey, you can get your, your line, you can get it in line, you get a filed application, get in line, you can take as long as you want it, well, not as long as you want it. Get in line so you're, we can tell you, yes, we can do that project, then no one else is going to get ahead of it. It's an application that's, oh, you probably need some engineering costs upfront, but there's probably one or two thousand dollars of cost to get this application done intelligently and you get in line and then you've got that reserved for the town of Brandon as opposed to some other private party or looks.
Okay, so where does, would the power from the state-owned land tie into them? Why would there be a substation that can handle that?
Well, I'm not sure what the capacity is there. I, I know if, if the state comes through and says, hey, you could do these very favorable community solar systems, they're going to have to do something to get Green Mountain Power to expand their capacity. And I have only heard again and again that Brandon has a very favorable three-phase capacity compared to most, so the smaller towns in the state. You know, we're not, we're the only one, but we have a very low three-phase capacity and a diminishing substation capacity that needs to be locked up.
And then where would you think you're tying in from that? What to tie in with three-phase?
Well, it's right on, out of Dister Road. If not, already has a water tower for all that.
So we'd have to get these ones to go through people's property.
Yeah, there's going to be some hurdles. This is not a
Oh, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to put this all together.
Yeah, no, I
This is too small, but then like, that not even be possible.
It, it may not be possible. And it needs to be explored.
It seems like with the close, with the proximity industrial parks, that a lot of that ability to tap into group power is already along the edge of the property.
Kind of runs, it didn't stop, but Well, it's not on the edge of that lot. I mean, it's, it's on the other side of the V I C lots, it runs around the power grid track. It's all underground.
I see. But, but it's thousands of feet away, not half a mile, a mile. But, and, and again, the big issue there is what's the substation capacity in, in that neighborhood? Right now, I was told, there's plenty for that, for a five-hundred kilowatt expansion if you wanted to add to the, to the town land that's right there in the industrial park.
I mean, at some point, it seems like it makes sense to involve the planners, the GMP, in a meaningful way of like, how are, how are they envisioning going forward towards their twenty-fifty goals? And how can we work with them to meet our goals? And I, I, I would think they would be, would be in favor of seeing us as a positive, you know, resource to work with.
I can reach out to a couple of contacts at Green Mountain Power too, to
Great.
And see what their thoughts are.
Thank you.
But thank you so much.
Other questions before we vote?
Thank you. Oh, we have a question.
Are we ready to vote? All in favor of proceeding with the letter or asking the sheriff to proceed with the letter to the state regarding the parcel that surrounds the water tank at Park Village? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, item six is to consider closing a portion of Park Street on September eleventh from five PM to seven PM. This was a request from Point Counterpoint Camp for a very interesting concert that they're sponsoring. And we had, we had talked about the original request at the last meeting and we got some information here in our packet from the town manager and police chief regarding implementing it in a safe way, using some volunteers to, to staff the traffic cones that would close up each portion of it.
I, I made a motion that we love to do this.
On these conditions?
Under these conditions.
All second. Motion for Mr. Giles and a second for Mr. Coolidge to proceed with closing Park Street from the intersection of Marble Street, High Street and Park Street to just beyond, just east of Celebration Rentals, to their easterlymost driveway of Celebration Rentals, from five to seven PM on September eleventh, which is Saturday, under conditions of them not parking in the traffic roadway and Point Counterpoint folks having to provide a person to staff both ends of the closure. Further discussion?
They didn't ask to guarantee the weather?
They did not. They're in a pretty sheltered spot there, right? Further discussion? All in favor of proceeding with the closure on these conditions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. That's unanimous. Great. Dave, could we ask you to contact Jenny Beck and just let her
Next question, if I may, in order of you guys, so. Yeah, I can do it.
If you don't, if you don't mind.
No, I just, just under this.
Thank you.
That's not a problem.
Okay, thank you. Item seven, consider appointment of a V L C T annual meeting voting delegate. They're having the annual business meeting Wednesday, September twenty-ninth at one PM in South Berlin. Mr. Appleton is going.
I have to be there anyway, so.
If that's a hint, in terms of a nomination for a delegate.
Need a motion?
Unless it's Mr. Giles going. Good. Dave's, Dave's fine, you don't have to have a second motion for Dave.
Make the motion to let, our town manager be a delegate.
Motion for Mr. Wyman, another second. Two seconds. Any discussion, any objection? None heard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't know if you guys saw the other letters that came with this, when the email was sent, that when you vote or you talk to some, you know, mayor of my boroughs, that like the, the president of the, they're supposed to address him, Mr. President.
Not to Mr. Mayor, Mr. President.
I don't think that's going to happen to me. When you get in trouble.
I haven't, I haven't heard anyone in this room address me as Mr. Chair in a long time.
I just had a visit.
You want us to start addressing the
No, no, it's
Mr. Chair.
Number seven, a couple of committee vacancies to announce. So this is the formal announcement that we want to thank Edna Sutton for her service on the Energy Committee. Edna Sutton has submitted a resignation, which enables us to announce a vacancy on the Energy Committee. That's a subcommittee of the Planning Commission. And there is also a vacancy on the Planning Commission. The chair, Ally Brier, advised of her resignation last month, and so this is the formal announcement. We don't recall that we announced it previously. So this is the formal announcement that there is a vacancy on the Planning Commission. And per the most recently adopted board policy, we will hold it over at least a meeting and entertain letters if anyone's interested in serving on the Planning Commission or the Energy Commission, Energy Committee. Please submit a letter of interest to the town manager.
Very good. I did get one to you, folks, tonight.
We do have one tonight, yes. There's the first letter of interest for the Planning Commission spot has come in, so that's excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else to be said on that? We, we do thank all of the volunteers who serve on the boards and commissions and put in the hard work behind the scenes. Item eight is the ARPA funds discussion. What's to be said tonight about ARPA funds? Can I hopefully look to you and say, do you have any update on when we will find out the actual amount? No update?
Not a word from the league either. Maybe it'll be discussed at our end.
You think that, you think it'll be like another month before?
I don't know.
We don't know.
It's a mystery.
How about our man in Montpelier? Have you heard any rumors about?
We don't even have.
What I'm talking about is the county allotments being.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, we don't have final guidance for the state yet from the feds, so.
So that's, that could be some time.
The latest, latest we heard was, what, a week or ten days ago, that the Treasury Department had allowed Vermont to, uh, parse out the, the counties, parse out, uh, money to towns because we had basically no county government. So once the counties take, the county takes what they need from that, they'll parse that out to individual towns. David, you got a breakdown on that yet? I don't know.
Um, no, I mean, we got our first check, I think it was one ninety-six, so I mean, when we figured it originally, we were supposed to get like three ninety, so I'm assuming it's the difference, unless some county entity decides they need a raise.
Oh, what are you saying?
I said.
No, 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 you're saying.
Well, from what Bush is saying, what we're hearing, like, it's gonna come to a county level at some point.
Yeah.
And if they, there could be a possibility that they spend a portion of it before they give it to the towns.
But that's the excess over what's already allocated to the towns, right?
That, that was my understanding, that's why we asked.
That's the.
Because we've been talking about three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, which has been confirmed and half received, right? So what we're talking about is, is this amount that the other states are using in their county government. Because I think it does, it does kinda influence which projects become viable and which projects, you know, um, don't.
I think.
So, okay, not a big update, we're down.
Yeah, I think we're talking earlier to the, you know, we're not expecting this to happen quickly, so.
Right. And we're still, um, we're still basically required to obligate our funds by next year, right? So we're not, we're not in some big urgency to obligate funds. Yes, Wayne?
Okay, at the last meeting, I believe you had a few discussions about different projects.
Yes.
Okay, can I make a suggestion for a project?
Please.
Okay, if you remember when we renovated the town office, okay, we started to run out of money, so some things had to be cut. And one of the things that was cut are the two picture windows in the front of the office. I think that would be an ideal project if you're getting some free money.
Well, so just to kind of put that one out, I used, I actually had a meeting with some folks from a construction company, hopefully, I think, actually, it's this Thursday, to discuss the replacement of all the windows in the town office. We've been putting, we have money aside, and we put, I can't remember how much in our budget every year for, for building and stuff, but again, this comes open like another conversation to have it down the road. This would also fit under capital projects, which our local option tax is there, like, that's what it was created for. So, um, but yeah, I actually got a meeting, I can't remember, it's this Thursday or next Thursday, with, um, folks to talk about window costs.
Great.
Yeah, those windows are dumb.
Thank you, Wayne. Yeah. Is there more comment, more discussion about ARPA? I don't know, did, did any new information get developed since last meeting? It's kind of feel like item development.
No, I, I, it feels like we want to be homing in, even though we don't have a total amount yet. Seems like we should be at least, um, developing a process for landing this thing as far as the decision.
And if we have a great process, you know, I, I do think we've got a process in place. But I think we're almost like, you know, in a position of, you know, a family looking for a house, but you don't know whether your bank balance is forty thousand dollars or four hundred thousand dollars. You're gonna look for a different house.
Right.
That, that, that's the only position that I'm in right now, is that I, I don't know why we would kind of go too much further without knowing what the.
I, I'm happy to wait for another, you know, until we get some more specific numbers.
As Dave says, you know, maybe, um, at V L C T's annual meeting, you know, maybe that's, that's their keynote, kind of.
They come and ask their question, it's gonna be asked too, so.
The only thing I would suggest, though, and Dave's brought this up before, when you were talking about the water projects that you wanted to see done, is that at some point, you, you gotta get the gears turning, and the earlier you can get started on, you know, getting that kind of thing happening is just more productive, you know, we don't wanna. And similarly, I'm happy to say, it already looks like we're moving some of the gears on the solar potential without committing ourselves. And so I, I, I think having the, 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 the forward thinking to keep these projects moving forward, even though we haven't decided on it yet.
So, I mean, are we down to basically some solar and the highway garage and Union Street and affordable housing?
It seems like those are the four that I feel like we're gonna.
Is that what you guys, Brian? Tracy?
Yeah.
I think that's what we've kind of.
Minely caveat is that the solar opportunity is, is a, like I say, this application needs to get in, the sooner the better, from my perspective. Because if you wait three months or six months.
G M P might commit to it. I totally appreciate that, but if we apply right now with the money that we know is confirmed to come to Brandon from ARPA, it's gonna be a project of X scale only.
Yeah.
And that's only if the board decides that all of our ARPA is going into solar. And if we wait until we find out where the county allotments, you know, turn out to be, then we could be talking about two X solar.
Yeah. Well, and, and I really don't know what the application calls for, other than they're probably need some engineering specs, maybe you don't need, you know, spend, get, hire a consultant to fill it out, I, I don't really know that information, so.
I know, like, any projects that I've done with mine and solar, that, um, the company that I dealt with took care of the.
Application.
Did they do that for us at the town already? Did Green Lantern?
They didn't do any of that.
They did that with Green Mountain?
I have a couple comments, actually. I, I think we're doing a pretty good job at, just, you know, seeing a lot of projects in town from, you know, sort of creation here in the room to becoming, you know, a reality. And there is a lot of planning to it, there's a big planning process, and I think that following these, these few steps that we've kind of started tonight is a good way to go with it, you know, like, and bring out the town garage, Sean, and we're talking about that this week, that we're gonna try to, you know, get something on paper and just throw some numbers out there to the people just to see what sticks. Um, you know, as far as Union Street, like, we know what needs to be done there, and that would just be down to the point of, you know, calling someone that, you know, one of our engineering friends and say, hey, just give us a, a rough idea of what this water source is gonna cost, even if we go down there, and I'm starting to have second thoughts about that one right now, too. I think, I think, I think the solar and the town garage are my top two right now, and maybe solar on the town garage is even better. But I think we're doing a good job of planning this out and figuring, you know, at least getting our ducks in a row in a couple different ways, so, you know, the ball drops, we're ready to go.
So, um, would it be possible then, I know Charlene just, I think, captured the four that you had just over said, but hearing Dave's most recent comment about how possibly the water could go the other some other way, would it be appropriate to bring it down to brief for, um, the purposes of our notes tonight? Are you willing to let that go, Dave, for having it come up another place?
What if you got rid of the affordable housing one, too? And I'll tell you why my, my concern is with that. It's another one, again, where we would have to acquire land, which is a long process.
I don't think that's what the, I understand the affordable housing suggestion to be, that the, as I understand the affordable housing suggestion, it's more redoing our housing stock that exists and not creating new housing. And so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a matter of laying that position, I don't think.
And so I think, I think it was presented as one of the options. In, in the overall plan, it wasn't presented as like, this is the main thing, but it was talking about, you know, acquiring distressed properties.
So, timely, uh, the legislative delegation met this morning with the, uh, housing folks up in West Rowland, Neighbor Works of Western Rowland County, and we had a very productive conversation with them. State's parsing out about one point five million dollars this year for affordable, for, just for weatherization and, and, and housing throughout the state, and, and more to come with, with, when we learn what we can do with this next phase of our ARPA money. But should you consider anything with affordable housing, I would suggest that you talk to, uh, Neighbor Works, uh, and, and folks, and Brock and those folks, because they're trying to, they're trying to sit together now as a group, all the housing folks in Rowland, uh, Rowland County Housing, they're building nineteen units down in the city now, they're trying to sit down now and come up with a comprehensive plan for the county, uh, to, to, to look at existing stock, new stock, uh, type of projects that, that are, are necess, are needed for them and needed throughout the county. So it's, it's a process that's underway currently, but it's in, right now, it's in kind of the infant stages of, of talking, because one of the questions that was asked of the exec director was, how, how willy-nilly are we going about affordable housing in the county? Because there are so many different organizations and, uh, and, and thoughts going on about this, so I would, I have no opinion on how you would spend money. Sometimes it's easier not to have money to govern than it is to have money to govern, so, uh, but I would suggest that you talk to the folks down there and, and, and bring them into the conversation should you move this further, for, for, further.
I think a lot of what we were talking about regarding affordable housing was related to, you know, weatherization and energy efficiency improvements to existing housing and so forth.
Yeah, yeah.
By, by making grants or making loans to.
Right, and there's, right now, there's considerable amount of state money available for those things through the O E O offices.
Yeah, I met with Bill Moore last week. He suggested that this be set up as a nonprofit, which would, um, request funds, the ARPA funds from the revolving loan fund, but then could also accept donations from other individuals or apply for grants. So, and I have talked to Brock, I have talked to, uh, Neighbor Works at a really high level because I didn't want to get ahead of the process.
And do you have any takeaways from those conversations that?
Sure, Brock, um, usually has a backlog of projects, right now they do not. They claim they can renovate a normal house for about eighty-five hundred dollars, and that's, uh, weatherization, insulation, that's new windows, doors if needed, and in some cases, heat pumps. And for low-income folks in, uh, Bennington and Rowland Counties, there's no cost. So obviously, we should proceed with that. I've got information on the program here that the Energy Committee wants to get out to the town residents.
So I think we, and I have to double check, but the last time I checked, we have brochures down in the town court's office for Brock, and I believe for Neighbor Works, I mean, they've been around for ever. And again, I think I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but I think I, we were talking the last time this came up, when we tried to do that whole pace program that was voted on, and it just, nobody applied for it. So, you know, that's the thing, is there's all these, there's these groups out here that are doing exactly what we wanna do, and they're already doing it, and they're doing it well, like, we should certainly, you know, folks should jump on it, I mean, they, they, they do great work. Even like the, you know, the, the whole affordable housing thing, I think I mentioned too, that the housing trust of Rowland County was saying that, you know, the Barlow Ave building, I don't think they still have it full, they've had a hard time filling up housing units in Brandon, so that's not a bad thing either, you know, that, that, I think they're, they're doing a pretty good job of what we're, you know, part-nilling here, and there's quite a few of them already that, um, that work.
So can I ask, and this is not a rhetorical question, and it's, it's meant with, with the greatest respect, because you put a lot of thought into the idea, I, the idea of affordability in the method that you suggested, it is very attractive to me as opposed to like us building a, you know, a small apartment building and trying to manage ourselves. When you've talked with Brock and Neighbor Works, and from what Dave was saying, you know, and said at the last meeting, are, are we thinking about maybe replicating some efforts that are already being done by professional or, or organizations that have a track record, I guess they should say?
Well, I think our goal should be to weatherize every house in town, whether it's low income, middle or high income. Now, we have state ambitious goals for energy conservation. I think that, and David's totally right, I mean, these programs have been out there, I think most people that would take advantage of them really aren't that familiar with them. I think that if we were to set up a council, we could identify some properties and then be proactive and go explain the program to people in conjunction with Brock and Neighbor Works, and at least get those parts of these projects going without spending a lot of money.
So that doesn't necessarily need town money?
Well, we'd like the towns in primatur of, yes, this is something we want to promote. Doesn't necessarily have to be a town project, it could be a nonprofit.
Certainly, our committee is tasked with getting that, finding ways to educate and motivate people, so I will be, that's gonna be one of our priorities, is this specific type approach.
It's, it seems like, um, you know, Efficiency Vermont seems to be pretty good at marketing their programs to people, like, it, it seems like when they announce a program, oftentimes there will be like a sunset on it kind of thing, or like while supplies last on, you know, rebates for this or that, that kind of thing. That kind of indicates to me that they must be either setting the amount that they have available in kind of a realistic way, and, you know, people are taking them up on it, or they're just very good at getting the word out, and maybe, you know, maybe Brock or Neighbor Works or, or us, you know, getting the word out about Brock or Neighbor Works would be a, an initial first step that could happen regardless of ARPA, um, kind of outside of ARPA.
And so Efficiency Vermont is basically loans, whereas Brock is more like grants.
Okay.
So if you're low income and you don't wanna get a loan.
Shouldn't the grants come, like, shouldn't those be like, you know, shouldn't they be?
Well, I mean, the interesting thing, the statistics that just came out, uh, through last year, there was four years of the tracking of how many homes did the weatherization programs they offer, how many did heat pump, you know, heat pump installations where they get the credits, and between those category three or four types programs, there was about, um, three hundred and forty Brandon residents that took advantage of these programs.
Ten percent.
How many, well, that's.
Ten percent.
How many households? How many households are there?
Eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred, and then businesses is probably twelve, thirteen houses. I mean, the, the.
That's pretty respectable.
It is respectable, it's a, after four years, and so now, how do you get, I mean, they're missing out on these huge opportunities. They're not, people aren't, you know, knowledgeable or inspired to do so, and we need to find a way to break through in that, because they're really advantageous programs.
So we do wanna have more affordable housing, but we wanna make sure it's weatherized.
Yes.
So it's kind of a dual, two birds.
I thought Brock was originally started for folks who were, you know, getting like WIC and things like that, but that was a thing for the state to understand, like, realize that they could save money on, you know, supply heating fuel and everything, that that's how that program came into place, was it was, you know, for folks that were already in need, um, I know it's how, I'm pretty sure it's how it was announced in county, I remember that years ago. So, you know, that they were really kind of focusing on, you know, folks with low income and needs and stuff, and I, they, I thought they did a pretty good job of getting it out there, but, um, you know, I, I, I think it's a great idea to get the word out, and that's most important, especially when all this stuff's already in place, and, you know, if they're looking for houses to work on, the Energy Committee needs to send something out, a newsletter or something.
Well, yeah, we're, we're talking about going through, uh, Front Quarter Report or the Brandon Reporter and other, maybe even a special mailing on some of these things.
Anyway.
So, um, a suggestion from Mr. Giles to see about Union Street maybe dissipation from the list.
To get us down to three.
And, uh, suggestion, counter suggestion for Mr. Appleton to, uh, join that to.
Or to get us to two. I'm good with that.
I would like, I would go for getting down to the tools, get down to the fore and the countertop.
I think both of those are good processes. Down as a whole. And I think in respect of Jack's work, we're still getting time promoting these programs that are mostly underused and find ways to get our committee to.
Right.
I mean, Brock has been underused for years.
Solved a lot of problems just now.
Well, actually, it sounds like the consensus of the board is that as far as the ARPA money is concerned, we will continue developing the concepts around the Highway Barn and the town, some town solar in one or more locations. And that's not to the exclusion of the town wanting to be supportive of. Energy efficiencies and weatherization projects probably best done through outreach from the Energy Committee at this time. Does that sound like about where we are?
Yeah.
Okay. That was helpful. Thank you. Any other comments on ARPA before we move on? Okay. Number nine is one of my favorite things, something I know nothing about, so I learned backhoe replacement funding.
I brought a whole folder of those informations.
Are there pictures there?
Actually, there are pictures, there are color pictures. So one of the last, okay, I remember the last one before, I let you guys.
Thank you for this.
Oh, right. That's right, it's a little.
Dave submitted the little bullet points.
I need to go over it if you want. I'm sorry, I can't. So Sean's been getting quotes from retailers for heavy equipment out here and, as you know, we're required to get three anyway. So he talked to Milton Cat, Bordeher Equipment, and Nortrax, which is John Deere. Some of the specifications we're looking for, Sean was worried that some of the companies, their equipment isn't quite as stable as others. We did see, and then just one here, well, I'll just read this down. So, I mean, if you look at the numbers, like, they're all pretty much in the, sort of the same ballpark with the highest one being 127,500, which is the John Deere. The lowest price is the K at 117 and then the CAT comes right in the middle at 123.
I'm sorry, was this included in our packet?
No, I put it right in front of you on your table. Can you take it?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was in the papers you put in my table. There was other papers, thank you.
Sure. So warranties are all different on some of these. We really like the seven-year, 3,000 an hour warranty. But anyway, we've got, I want to list these, just show you kind of what the costs were. Sean would like to go check these out, you know, so we can touch them and turn them on and turn them around a little bit, just to see how they are. But the reasoning for this memo is that I would, I would like to request that we use the local option tax to fund the purchase of a new backhoe for a work equipment. This does fall under the capital portion of what we, what the charter was done for. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be any taxpayer cost because we've, you know, this has been funded through that. So it wouldn't even go to our budget, we wouldn't have to go through a lease program. We just buy it out, right, we're done. What about the votes?
Go ahead.
Oh, so go ahead, Trey.
What do we have in the option?
Well, after, so Sue actually printed this one out before the 62,000 came in, so it's like 448, I think, is what, 448,000?
Okay.
So we're in good shape with it. But, you know, we've been talking about forever too, like, trying to come up with some, you know, process on how we want to spend this. And we've talked about infrastructure a lot and everything, but I do think there's some other things we could look at coming down the road where this local option money would be really helpful and not to increase our budget annually with purchasing certain things.
Question, would we be better off with excavators?
Sean doesn't think so because the ones we're looking at, we did, Sean did want to get, like, the bucket with the thumb on it. The nice thing with the backhoe, if the loader's down, we still have the bucket in the front so we can use it at that and drive the backhoe down the road versus having, you know, with the excavator. And we had really good luck this year. We rented one from G Stone to do a bunch of work and, you know, it was 2,600, I think.
Yeah, true.
And we had it for a month. So, you know, it's maintenance free for us at that point and they were great to deal with and bring it to us and everything. So I think at this point, because our backhoe is tired, we've put pretty much money into it, there's a lot of, just parts are loose. The backhoe is more practical to replace than to get an excavator.
I mean, I definitely would lean towards a Caterpillar, I think, for the warranties versus for the warranties that you have. I mean, the case, I mean, there's absolutely nothing for a warranty, really. And the deer is only certain covered, only certain components can be covered.
So Sean and I are leaning towards the CAT too, just because we have other CAT equipment.
That was my next thing, we've got CAT motors and CAT graders.
He really liked the case, like, it was something new that they did with it, where he's, you know, he's more worried about stability, that the thing's not gonna tip over.
Right.
And which, I'm glad that he's looking at that. So that's, that's what, those are kind of the two, like, the John Deere, we're like, you know, but, so, yeah, the case has the best warranty and we deal with those guys already, you know, our loader's CAT, our grader's CAT, so they're close.
So what are you looking at for, for most of the money? Just a box in here?
I'd like, I'd like to get approval to use the local option funds to purchase a new backhoe.
I wonder if I can jump in for a second? The timing of this is excellent. Somehow on my news feed, two, three days ago, I stumbled onto a, an article, a video showing some major city, I believe it's the United States, that's gone all electric for their construction equipment. And it boggled me to think that they could have all of these pieces of equipment and these are like, you know, industrial-grade, you know, moving equipment, whether it's excavators or backhoes or the whole thing, you know, whole job site. And while I'm not suggesting that this is, is gonna work this time, I would at least love to see, reach out to see, you know, what is the electric option? And what does it cost, what does it look like to cater to the specs you want? Because, I mean, you clearly have specifications to meet. And it would just be an interesting, you know, kind of trial run at, when we try to buy new equipment, you know, what's the electric option? Could I ask for some outreach in that way?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't heard anything from any of the, any of the distributors here that there's anything electric. I mean, industrial mowers and stuff.
Oh, no, I'm talking, this was a major industrial site that they had on the thing with like full-size equipment. It was all silent because it was all electric and they were seeing all the benefits, the safer work sites, because all of a sudden, you don't have all the noise of the machines. And so maybe I'll put it on myself to come up with some contact or someplace for you to reach out to, maybe a quote.
Did they, did they have, like, were they from like the established, kind of known big manufacturers?
It did look like it was, and this was not a test thing, it wasn't like a university, this was like a regular job site and the equipment had, you know, equipment, it looked like normal industrial.
I mean, I guess what my thought would be on that would be to, to ask your, on these, like, your Milton Cat, your, your Nortrax, what's your, you know, what's your picture in that?
Yes.
When you're, when you're talking to them rather than, I definitely hear where you're going, but I personally lean towards something that's already, a company that's already established has something to spend that kind of money on, I guess. But, you know, if CATs have something that's in the works or?
Well, it's very possible that they're getting challenged with companies that are coming up with alternatives. And this is where I think the specs will be, would be interesting to compare because I certainly don't suggest we get something that's frail and unusable. I mean, it would need to have a robust tractor, you know.
And figure out how to deal with charges on roads that don't have power.
Oh, all that kind of stuff.
Right.
And as I say, it's very likely to be a trial run in my point of, because it's just, I didn't even think we'd have this option until two, three more years from now. As much as I know it's coming down the pipe, it just stunned me to see this on a work site and all of these things were electric and they were all full-size equipment going to town. Okay, so I'll do my homework and get some views.
Okay.
So you wanted not to exceed kind of authorization, is that, would that do you trick?
Sure, but I think you guys still have to make a motion to use the local option funds too, so.
Before we do that, though, or we can have a motion first, doesn't really matter, small board. I don't need us to have a plan, like, that says we're gonna use the local option tax for this this year or this next year, I don't need that. I do feel like I don't want the local option tax to be some kind of unrestricted, as things come up, we just start writing checks from. I want a little bit of direction. And the charter that we adopted does give it some guardrails by saying, you know, it's gotta be a capital expense within the town. You know, we can't use it for personnel, there's a bunch of other stuff we can't use. I just, I'm not sure how to get that direction kind of a little bit more formal than what it is. The reason we don't have that direction right now is because for the whole life of the local option tax fund to this point, the expressed position on the board was it will be spent to balance segment six before anything else. And you can see, we actually had this request from Sue that I wanted to ask you about, because I thought we did balancing change order.
Balancing change, that was the last pair that we did last time. So we're next.
So anyway, so like now segment six is over and I think we do need a little bit more direction or focus on the local option tax fund.
So a suggestion, because I've been thinking about this a lot too, you know, even when I first did it on how, I mean, we talked about it off and on, what we were gonna spend, how we move forward with this. I always take in the approach to this, like I said earlier, to, you know, take items that were normally in our, our regular operating budget, that have kind of high dollars, you know, like paving, equipment, building expenses, that we could easily not have to go to the taxpayers for with a, you know, because 30,000 is, as you know, a 1% increase, 30,000 doesn't do a lot of work anymore. So to have something like that, whether it's once a year or whatever, and not have to throw it in the budget, that's, that's gonna be helpful. You know, just looking at paving and stuff or grant, well, yeah, we could do it with grant, that would still be capital for certain things, but I guess that's what I thought we were trying to do was sort of offset the burden to all of us that pay taxes, you know, and still be able to move forward with things in town. Like Wayne talking about windows, I think that's a great, another great thing to put on the list. You know, I'd like to see us not have, like, building debt anymore. You know, we got lucky with like the town office when we did that with a grant, this was obviously, you know, paid for through grants and everything, but like when the town bonded to do the police department, you know, for all of us who are here in this room, we're still paying for that. You know, that, that's something that should have been done differently, I think, to not have that burden on the town for as long as it has been. So those kind of things, they're big items that, you know, where it's 30,000 dollars a year for an annual payment, it's, we should get rid of them. We should get rid of that credit card debt sort of stuff that we have. And if we need equipment like this, if we know we've got it, I mean, it's not breaking the bank with our local options, that seems to be a good reason to use it.
And what year is the backhoe down now? I want to say, I want to say it's close to 30 years old.
I'm thinking eight years.
Got some music?
Don't say too much about it public, I don't want any of these companies to hear how old it is. It's, I think it's.
What you're telling me, that it's a little older than the church on Sunday?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, for the, for the hours that are on it.
I think it's.
It goes to that, the little way they drive the church.
It's, it's had a hard life through the years. Oh, not that, it's since 2004.
Is it?
Isn't that one?
Yeah.
I thought that was almost 20 years old. I always thought it was supposed to say, they had a rough life.
This isn't the one that got bought when they brought the old one to town meeting?
No, that was the lower.
That was the lower?
That's a cat.
Okay, so more discussion.
Well, it sounds like we're discussing giving Dave permission to spend the options money. It's a possibility. Up to a limit, is that the, are we?
That was my thought, it was like, he has these things, he can still explore the electric, but in the Green Fleet policy, one of the things was, you know, kind of a comparable function for a comparable outlay of taxpayer money, right? So if we set the not to exceed limit at the high end of these three and if the electric item comes in somewhere in that range, it can be considered that if it comes in at four times a day.
More than fair, yes, I just wanted to be sure that that process kind of aligns with that possibility.
That makes sense. So we use it.
So what's the high end here? 127,500?
Great.
Does someone want to offer a motion to authorize the town manager to use local option tax funds not to exceed 127,500 in contemplation of buying a new backhoe?
Yeah, so.
Motion from Mr. Wyman? Second from Mr. Coolidge? Was that phrased appropriately? Does that sound right? More discussion? Okay. And with the understanding that you're gonna attempt to get some, some quote on electric ones.
Kind of curious. I'm really curious, it's a very, go through the.
All right, so all in favor of this motion to authorize the use of the local option tax fund not to exceed 127,500 to buy a new backhoe, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All right, so that's unanimous. And then we have this other local option tax fund request from the town treasurer, she's not here.
Nobody else speak for her?
Would you?
So the balancing change order is still, the last pair that we had was the left, the stuff that was left, the bridge here with the paving and everything that was done, which was added on to the project as we don't know. So balancing change order, we're honestly thinking it's not using, it'd be 10,000 right now, so I don't know what she's anticipating, thinking that it's gonna be more. I mean, if that was 5%, that'd be, it's gonna be sizable and I don't see that happening, so we can almost put it back in if we have to. I really don't know what her reasoning was for that.
So this is a request to move it, move 14,412 dollars and 12 cents from the local option tax fund to Fund 46, which is the Route 7, Segment 6 matching fund, and to make it be a prior fiscal year transaction.
Right.
So this is.
Another thought aside, she's probably doing this for that last pay rec down, because that would have gone out, when did we bring that? A month ago? Did I come to the board? I wish I best if I was on match for that last pay rec.
Okay. Is there a motion regarding the town clerk's request?
Yeah.
Just one moves to approve the town clerk's requests. There are second, Mr. Giles? Any discussion, further discussion? Public input?
It's really done, project's done.
Project continues to be done. Okay. All in favor of moving, of transferring 14,412 dollars and 12 cents from the local option tax fund to Fund 46, which is the Segment 6 match, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signal? If it's unanimous, great. All right, item 11 is the warrant.
There's a motion to approve the warrant, 1,247,000, 247,832 and 32 cents.
Motion for Mr. Coolidge to spend a million bucks and a quarter. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second from Mr. Swamen?
The million goes to the Otter Valley Unified School.
Absolutely, yeah.
We have a small park.
Even without the million though, that's still kind of a big warrant, 247,000.
Well, there's more appropriations in there too, the Cedar District's in there.
Oh, there's a truck to the Fire District, okay.
Yeah, so.
Any discussion, any questions on bills? Any discussion? Any questions on bills? Pretty to vote. All in favor of the warrant as presented, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed, say no. It's unanimous. And then there's a notice from the town treasurer of changes to certificates of deposits owned. She has opened eight-month certificates at zero point four five percent, one of them to hold the town farm CD, one of them to hold, no, and then also to hold two hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund checking account. And then she has placed the ARPA funds in a similar CD. So that's for information of the board and any interested parties. Short-term, trying to maximize the town's interests. We appreciate that from Sue. Any announcements for the benefit of the community?
Let's know it, Jerry.
All right. Motion in a second to adjourn, it's not debatable. All in favor of adjournment at three thirty-one, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, say no. You guys have it? Perfect. Step four to adjourn.